So welcome. Today, we have a great program. Sam and I are both really excited about this. Sam put in a lot of work to build this panel. Addressing why school board elections and school boards are so important in understanding how to really look at candidates and making sure that in November, we all vote in the best person for the role. I'm Cynthia Peoples, she/her pronouns. I'm the founding director of Honesty for Ohio Education and welcome to today's luncheon. For those of you not familiar with the Coalition, I'll just kind of give you a quick wrap up of what we're all about. We are a nonpartisan statewide coalition. We work with more than 70 different organizations across the country and here in Ohio. If you look over to the right of your screen, you'll see just a handful of some of the incredible organizations that we work with Policy Matters Ohio, ACLU Ohio, and League of Women Voters Ohio being our three core founding organizations. We have three pillars to our work. We educate, advocate, and build community around honest, inclusive education, ensuring that all identities, cultures, and lived experiences are affirmed in the classroom, and most importantly, fighting for the rights and safety of all students, all families, and all of our hardworking educators and school board members. We do this very important work at three critical access points to public education. That's at the State House, at the State Board of Education, and in our local school districts. And you can imagine, working in these three lanes at the same time keeps our coalition very, very busy. And we do that by putting out a lot of great content, information, up-to-the-minute news and events, just like this one, our monthly Lunch and Learn program. And this year, we're also launching our statewide local organizing campaign where, get a load of this, we are going to be building local honesty action teams in school district communities across the state of Ohio, really localizing the work that we do at a state level in your community to help build those honest, inclusive school districts. And today, what we're going to do is start with just a quick wrap up of what the state of education is across the country, and then what it looks like here in our own State House. And then we'll dive into this program. We'll start with Cheryl Ryan from the Ohio School Boards Association, who's really going to break down what school boards do, their critical roles, functions, responsibilities, and what our school board members do as well. It's a very comprehensive, deep dive into school boards. And then Sam Shim is going to take the wheel and moderate a very deep discussion with three incredible local school board members from different pockets of the state of Ohio. So we'll really get a diverse perspective of what school board life is like in Ohio. And then we'll wrap it up with some different ways that you can take action, especially around our upcoming general election in November, where all of our school boards across the state of Ohio will be on the ballot. And then, as we do, because we love a good link, we'll share a pretty good slides worth of resources where you can continue to learn after the program. And a couple of housekeeping notes, this program is being recorded. The recording and the slide deck with all of those hot links will be uploaded to the Lunch and Learn landing page on the Honesty website. Okay, so let's dive into the state of education. These are kind of a pain point for us. These maps that you see here, we call them heat maps. Each of these maps really kind of give a a temperature check about what honest education and these attacks on public education look like at different parts of the country. The first map that you see over here really looks at these different efforts to censor honest education, you know, dating all the way back to when the first first round of censorship bills hit back in January of 2021. This great map is put out by Education Weekly, which many of the educators on this call are very familiar with that onsite publication. Since January of 2021, more than 44 states across the country have introduced or passed legislation, resolutions, or actions to censor honest education in K-12 school districts. Education Week does a great job about staying very current around what these bills look like. And Sam will be dropping links to these different heat maps into the chat. And what's great about each of these maps is you can hover over each of the states and it'll give a quick breakdown of what those different policies and legislation look like. Swinging over here to anti-critical race theory bills, if you remember this initial attack against public education dating back to 2021 really started with this manufactured crisis around critical race theory being taught in our classroom, K-12 classrooms, which we know it's not. But UCLA has this great tracker, and according to UCLA, since September of 2020, more than 229 different government agencies and entities have introduced or passed more than 750 efforts to ban critical race theory, or even things that smell like critical race theory in different states across the country. All the way over here to the right, we know our higher ed spaces are no stranger to any of these efforts. And this map over here is put together by the Chronicle of Higher Education. And they're tracking these copycat bills, you know, very similar model legislation. There are more than 40 bills across the country right now that have been introduced in 22 states that are banning required or any types of DEI, banning any kind of majors, policies, programs that center race, gender identity, or faith. And seven states have already adopted those, those efforts into law. Thankfully, 29 states have rejected those efforts. And down here on the bottom, so many of our organizations and our coalition kind of live in this space down here. If you take a look at this map, ACLU National is, is tracking nearly 500 different bills attacking LGBTQ plus students, families, and communities that have been introduced just since January of this year. This isn't of all times. This isn't even in the last five years. This is since January of this year, and we have many of these bills sitting in our own State House. And that's what some of this over here, over to the right, is Ohio has been kind of living in these culture war bills. I, I look at them more as attacks on humanity, not just culture, culture wars. And these bills that are living in so many different state houses across the country are designed to disrupt, dismantle, and defund public education and to divest funds from public education over to privatized education, which we've seen, and to really create this flight out of public education into privatized education and distract states from focusing and addressing the real education issues and to ultimately proliferate and perpetuate the othering discrimination and hate towards historically and intentionally excluded and marginalized communities. And they do that by creating legislation that weaponizes race, identity, and faith. And we know that so many of these bills right now are, are driven through Christian nationalism and this rise in neo-Nazism and, and just kind of trying to wrap their hands around a white supremacy culture, villainizing educators and staff, and really designed to cast this chilling effect on education. In our State House, just recently, in early July, our legislators passed our state budget, which hardwired three of these bills that we had been fighting into the state budget. Senate Bill One, which was the state takeover of public education, was adopted into our state budget. Universal voucher program was adopted into our state budget, which gives thousands of dollars to all families across Ohio to use for private education and siphoning that money out of our public schools. And then the last one that we had been fighting as well was this creation of five different partisan thought centers, conservative thought centers in five university campuses across the state of Ohio. Just below that, you can see some of the other priorities that we are still fighting that thankfully were not adopted into the budget. And we are, we're ready for the fight. We're ready for the legislators to come back and to protect our communities, our experiences, and our students, and all of the people that love our students across Ohio. We've got some bills that are trying to overhaul K-12 social studies standards and base it on this very extremist social studies standards from the Civics Alliance, which are also, is also the organization that's responsible for this Higher Education Destruction Act bill as well. So that's very important to, to tune into. That organization is responsible for two of these bills. There is one bill here that we're very excited about. House Bill 171 is a bill that Honesty and so many of our partners worked so hard to draft, get legislative support on, and introduce into the State House. It's a multicultural K-12 social studies curricula bill, which is ensuring that all of the cultures, communities, and contributions of so many folks that already call Ohio home is woven into our state curriculum standards. Swinging down, looking at some of the anti-LGBTQ plus bills, some of these bills have already made their way out of the House and are headed over to the Senate. House Bill Eight, which is essentially the forced outing of our LGBTQ plus students and really censoring any kind of content that can be labeled as sexuality. So it's essentially a don't say gay bill as well. That bill is headed over to the Senate. House Bill 68 is kind of like a Frankenstein bill at this point, and it's banning gender-affirming care for minors. And then it's also banning our transgender, gender diverse, and gender non-conforming athletes from being able to participate on teams that align with their gender identity. That bill is headed over to the Senate as well. There's a relatively new bill that's banning our trans students from restrooms and facilities that align with their gender identity. And this new bill that was introduced over the summer is essentially a ban on gender expression in terms of expressing yourself as an artist, an entertainer, or just a human being. If you're, if you are transgender, gender diverse, or gender non-conforming as well. So you can see, we've got a lot of hate here, but we've got so much love and light and solidarity. We will fight these bills. We were able to fight them all in the last General Assembly, and we will get them out of our State House this cycle as well. And then just a few others here, which this bottom part right here will be interesting to, to unpack in our table discussion. And these are bills that kind of dictate staffing and conduct and governance of our local school districts. There's a bill here that bans our school districts from requiring or forcing staff to align with district values or commitments. House Bill 240 is a bill that would allow districts to employ or use volunteer chaplains as unlicensed school counselors in our K-12 districts. House Bill 206 is a bill that would allow districts to create an indefinite expulsion policy for our schools and really giving superintendents a lot of flexibility and license to determine what that policy would look like. And then finally, House Bill 240, 235 is a bill that completely restructures our State Board of Education, making them partisan races, eliminating all of our appointed members, and realigning the state, the 11 State Board districts from aligning with our Ohio Senate districts to aligning with the Ohio congressional districts. I know that was a lot. We love to fire hose people with a lot of information. If you head over to our legislation tracker page, you can learn a lot more about all of these bills. But what I want to do right now is go ahead and turn it over to why you are all here, so we can have this great discussion with our local school board members. But first, we're going to start with Cheryl Ryan, who is the Director and of Board and Management Services for the Ohio School Board Association. In her role, Cheryl assists Ohio's locally elected public school board members with superintendent, treasurer, and other executive-level administrative searches, governance, and leadership development, and looking at conflict resolution, strategic planning, goal-setting, administrator evaluation, board self-assessment, community engagement, and surveys. When does she sleep? When does she breathe? I don't know. Cheryl does a lot of really, really good work. She's also an active participant and presenter at various state and national conferences. And we love this about Cheryl. She's also served as a local school board member too. So she really knows and appreciates the hard work of all of her constituents, which are Ohio's locally elected school board member. Fun fact about Cheryl, she was also the Director of International Programs at OSU's Fisher's College of Business. Cheryl, take it away.
Great. Thank you so much. It's my pleasure to be with you here, and thank you again to Sam and Cynthia for your hard work in, in putting this together, inviting OSBA to present. So on behalf of the association, I'm, I, I got the long straw today. I'll consider it the long straw in, in being selected to, to offer this brief presentation to you. And I'm going to move as quickly as I can so that I can get out of the way for your school board members. I just want to share our vision. I believe every school board should have a very active strategic plan. It helps board members stay in governance mode and, and helps good board members resist individual board members who want to get in the weeds or want to disrupt or detract from the school's strategic plan. So I always share OSBA's vision with people. We're, we're very proud of it, and we are very proud of living within a strategic plan ourselves. Next slide. So just briefly, a few of the things that we try to do to assist public boards of education also, just as a sideline, our by, our bylaws, we do not serve charter schools, religious schools, or schools other than publicly elected school boards of education. Sometimes our publicly elected school boards or our school district members sponsor community schools, and they can become part of the association. But public education is our deal. We do promote it. Excuse me, can we go back one? We do provide a lot of PD for board members and administrators that Cynthia mentioned, and we really try and help you all build and support your networks. Thank you. Next slide. So we do have a legislative platform. OSBA staff do not create our platform. Our school board members do. Every public school district in Ohio has one person who can attend the delegate meeting at our Capitol Conference and vote. On our platform, we have a full-time group of lobbyists who then advocate for that platform at the State House and across the state and nationally. We have many, many publications. Several of them are focused very much on legislation. Some of them are focused on student achievement, and many of them are on governance. But we do talk about a fire hose. We do fire hose, but we, we hope that we're able to provide information that suits all of our districts and their various members. We try and provide resources and training that districts want, and every district is different. We'll talk a little bit more about that. So there may be things that OSBA endorses or offers that your district has no interest in, and that's absolutely fine. But we hope that we can serve the needs of all of our districts through our connections. So in Ohio, public school board members are locally elected. They are elected hopefully to represent the values, culture, and priorities of their community. Most school boards are five members. Some are more. But we usually work with an assumption of five board members. They come from all parts of the community. The only requirement for a school board member is that you have lived in your home district for at least 30 days and you're 18 years of age. So school boards matter very much, and we are, our emphasis, as it has always been, but more than ever, is to encourage community members across communities to understand whose name is on that yard sign and what they stand for and, and where they come from. Next. So there are, we hope that school board members are very interested in representing the diverse and divergent ideas that come from all corners of their community. And sometimes we have a school district divided into multiple townships, villages, towns, and even pieces of a city. So if you become a school board member or are a school board member, that's a critical piece of your role, is to make sure you're hearing from, from every aspect of your community and making sure everybody comes to the table. We currently have 712 public school districts. Our smallest school district is Putin Bay, Ohio. And they have varied in my time at, at OSBA from as few as eight students, as many as 16 or 20. But they are, our districts are large, medium, and small. They are rural, suburban, semi-urban, urban. They all have some of the same problems. They all have financial challenges. They all have diverse opinion challenges. During the pandemic, they all had the same masking or vaccination challenges that you can imagine. And many districts and their boards are fairly like-minded, and they have, I hate to use the word homogeneous, but they are, you know, somewhat homogeneous. But most districts are not. And there are many districts who have individuals on the board and that are not like-minded, and that can create conflict. They all have very diverse priorities and needs. And every district has socioeconomic diversity. I don't care how rich or poor they are. There is some socioeconomic diversity in every Ohio district. Next slide. So I love that school board membership in Ohio has traditionally been non-political. And at the time I was a school board, I was never offered endorsement by the Democratic or the Republican Party or any other politically affiliated party. It didn't, it didn't matter. What mattered was that I was interested in what's best for kids in my school district, all kids in my school district. That school board membership is still non-political. I think that needs to be guarded, and I hope that will continue to be guarded and advocated for in Ohio. But we hope that what that means is that every school board member comes to the table, regardless of their own personal philosophies, but, but grounded in what's best for all the kids in their district. Next slide. School board membership is sometimes a platform. There are, there are many, many, in fact, I would say, most school board members that have no other goal politically than to be an effective and good school board member. But there are school board members who have become city council people, town council people. We have several state representatives in Ohio who are former school board members and are doing wonderful work at the state level. But it makes it even more important for community members to learn about who is running for the school board, why they are running for the school board, and, and what their motivations are before they cast their vote. Next. So the Board of Education is the governing body of the public schools. We always like to tell board members that, once you are a board member, you should operate in governance mode through your strategic plan. How can the school board support our administration and teaching staff in doing the curricular work and the extracurricular work of the district? They are not managers and administrators. Most times, they are not school or education experts. We have farmers, bankers, lawyers, retired folks. Everybody you can imagine is on the school board, and they rely on expert administrators in their districts to make key decisions that they will, again, try and support. The board does have responsibility for operating the district in accordance with the desires of its community. The, the school board must make sure that the district ends its fiscal year in the black. And it sometimes needs to make very, very difficult decisions about things like levies within the district. Next. These are the five standards. We advocate these five standards. They are born up and bared and, and held high, I would say, at a national level by national research. The Iowa Lighthouse Study, the Harvard School of Education. There are many, many people across the country that write books on highly effective school boards and high-functioning school boards. And most all of them boil down to some semblance of these five standards, which we at OSBA support. And as I work with school boards, as my colleagues work with school boards across the state, we try and align district goals with these five standards for boards. Click. So adopting and maintaining governance policies. Many board members will tell you that they think policy is boring. A lot of them would like to tell you that it is irrelevant, but what I tell all school board members is that if your policy manual is up to date and you follow it, it means that you are behaving in legal, ethical, and consistent ways for all of your students. So managing by policy or governance by policy is a critical aspect of board work. The only two people in Ohio that the school board is directly responsible for hiring, guiding, mentoring, and managing are the superintendent and treasurer. That is different in Ohio than in many states. In most states, the treasurer also reports to the superintendent. But in Ohio, the superintendent and treasurer are parallel in the organizational chart, allowing for some separation between the financial aspects of the district and the administrative choices of the district. And so those are the two people. Everybody else in the district is hired by one or both of those two people and managed by one or both of those two people, although they are usually almost always, or in fact, always since recent history, appointed and approved by the Board of Education at the recommendation of the superintendent. They approve the annual budget and appropriations. Most school board members are not finance, school finance experts. They try to be. We offer lots of resources and training, but school finance is very complex. Most school board members don't know what a mill is when they come to the board, and they very quickly learn what a mill is all about in terms of, of levies and appropriations, property taxes, all of that, all of that good kind of stuff. But I tell school board members all the time, you don't need to be an expert, but you need to be competent, and you need to understand that your school budget is very, very important to your community and your students. Make sure it's aligned to your strategic plan. Make sure your treasurer and your superintendent are working in tandem and in partnership with the Board of Education. School board members must provide for the resources necessary to finance the operation of the district. They need to make sure school buildings are safe, modern, and appropriate for all students to be able to reach their full potential. And that's different now than it was when we all went to school in the 60s, 70s, and 80s. So it's a constant, and that includes, that includes PD for teachers. It includes making sure our buildings are safe and secure. It includes making sure, a board making sure that its hiring practices are legal, ethical, transparent, et cetera. So that is a big one right there. And a big part of the school board's job is the community engagement piece. They need to inform the public about progress and needs, hopefully inform the public about challenges, the options that they're considering to address those challenges, the pros and cons of each of those options. We like board member, board members to get very involved at board meetings in a public way, talking with their superintendent and other board members about why one option might be better than another, bringing community members to the table around what we call big-ticket decisions, and making sure that their community is highly invested in the health and welfare of the school district. So for those of you who are on this webinar, and those of you who know others who are running for the school board, just some things we hope board candidates do, and that's that they are attending school board meetings regularly and making their presence known at school board meetings through signing up or signing in, depending on your school board practice, understanding about your district's current goals and priorities, and also its history. Where does it come from? Where were the times in its history where it really faced significant challenge, and what has happened since then? Manage and participate in honest, factual, positive, and professional election campaigns, attend meet-the-candidate nights, encourage other people to attend meet-the-candidate nights. And I mean, you're voting public and doing that as often as you can. And we hope that all school board members are very, very interested in critical thinking and problem-solving, and not so much in throwing stones and criticizing. That's my last slide. It was quick. Certainly could go on forever, but, but I hope it's been somewhat helpful, and that if any of you have questions, I'm happy to watch for them in the chat.
Amazing. Thank you so much. You just gave us so much content in a very concise, effective way. I, I already know I'm going to get a lot of requests for the slide deck. So a quick reminder again that the slide deck and the recording, all of the information that Cheryl just shared will be uploaded to the Lunch and Learn landing page. Thank you so much, Cheryl. And now we're going to turn it over to Sam Shim. Sam Shim runs our programs for the Honesty Coalition. And a little bit of background about Sam. He is the first Asian American to be elected into public office in Columbus and served on the Worthington City Schools Board for eight years. And as a Korean-American man raising autistic and transgender multiracial children, Sam has been a longstanding public education activist and advocate. Always championing safe, equitable, inclusive school policies, especially prioritizing. The experience of our BIPOC, Black, Indigenous, Students of Color, LGBTQ plus students. And other intentionally excluded and marginalized students. Sam founded and chairs the Ohio Asian American Pacific Islander Caucus, AAPI for short. Serves on the Ohio Literacy Advisory Council. Um, also serves on the Ohio Teacher of the Year Selection Committee. Love that. The International Studies Field Studies Board and the Buckeye Flame Board. Um, and also is the state co coordinator for Parasol Patrol. Um, whose volunteers show up with rainbow umbrellas. At events across Ohio to shield children from hate. So I'm going to turn it over to my friend and colleague, Sam Shim.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for being here today. Uh, what we have is an incredible panel uh from across the state. Uh, I wanted to quickly introduce our three awesome panelists. Uh, first we have Renda Klein. Who is the current president of Mansfield City Schools Board of Education. Uh, she has served, served on the board for 12 years. And she works as a health education and communication specialist at Richmond Public Health. She also serves at. On the Ohio State University Mansfield Campus as board chair. And the board, and she serves on the Board of Directors at the Mansfield Art Center. And she also serves on the OSBA Board of Trustees. So welcome, Renda Klein from Mansfield. We also have Dion Manley, uh, who serves on the school board at Kahana Jefferson Schools. He is also the dad of a college student. And is the first out trans person to be elected into office in the entire state of Ohio. Dion also serves on the school board for Eastland Fairfield Center and technicals. Technical schools. Welcome, Dion. And our third panelist is Dr. Moffett. Who joined the Cincinnati Board of Education last year. Uh, she has a lot of experience in education. Uh, her PhD is in educating urban African American students. And she believes strong students. Begin with building strong schools and strong communities. In addition, Dr. Moffett has earned a master's degree in remedial education. And a bachelor's degree in natural science. And also an associate's degree in chemical engineering technology. Wow, you know, that's, that's quite impressive. So welcome to the three great panelists. And we are going to start with a couple of prepared questions, uh, but. We will open it up. So uh. If you have any questions, feel free to drop it in the box or wait a few minutes and we'll give you the opportunity. Opportunity to ask these questions directly to any of our panelists, including Cheryl Ryan. So let's start with this, uh, for our three school board members. Uh, we are curious, why did you decide to run for your local school board?
Do we have an order, Sam, that we want to go in or just anybody?
Anyone can go.
Okay, well, I'll go first since I unmuted. Um. I'm Kareem Moffett and I am the parent of now three adult. Graduates of Cincinnati Public School and they, um, my youngest graduated in 2019, so right before the pandemic. I was a very active parent. I wouldn't say helicopter parent, but maybe borderline. Um, but I was um a helicopter parent that was. Active on the PTO level and in the building level and in my community. I am on the executive committee for the N W A C P. So I saw a lot of things, but one thing that I didn't see was a lot of engagement with. With board members at that time. I felt like they needed to engage the community and listen to the community more. So I wanted to run to be a bridge builder between the community. And the school district. I think as a voter and a parent. Parents are very capable of understanding school finance. It just has to be broken down. Parents are also capable of understanding what challenges the school district is facing. If you are giving them the information timely. So I wanted to be that school board member. Who got answers to questions and provided that connectivity to the district um that I was not getting. And um I think there's a lot of means out there. So uh, that's, that's why I ran.
Thank you.
So I can go next. Um. So I, much like Kareem, was very involved with my children's um educational experience, working with PTO. Um, being a leader for different scouts and um. Just actively participating with my children and I noticed that there were parents who weren't at the table. And as a mom who was in the classrooms, um, I wanted to know why they weren't there. So I started to dig deeper and found that the narrative that. Parents who weren't there um didn't care was not correct. And it was actually, most of those parents were working. Or they had other children at home. There were reasons that they weren't there and they needed their voices to be heard and they're, they needed their children to be advocated for. So I became very active in that way and um. As my children got older, they didn't need me inside the classroom more in their school buildings as much. So um, there were some teachers and some parents who asked me if I would be interested in running and. As far from my radar as that was, um. I jumped right on board and I've been there ever since and I love being an advocate, not just for my children. But for other people's children as well, because everyone's voice needs to be heard. And everyone deserves a seat at the table.
Hi, um, okay, so I was asked to run and I immediately said, oh no, let me help you find someone better, but thank you. Um, but really I, after thinking about it, I decided. Um, you know, I really couldn't say no. Uh, I felt like as a single parent, I owed so much to the teachers who helped me. Raise my daughter and they were, um, you know, being attacked and disrespected, undermined and et cetera. So. Um, I really felt like a. I had to, and I had wanted to do more. So I want to say, welcome to the candidates. This is like the greatest adventure, the biggest adventure, at least it was for me. So I want to say also, I um have always loved politicians. Who are just different, different in any way. Um, I feel like I. Connected with them. I feel inspired by them. I resonate them. I love it when they say things that I never hear. Um, you know, from the typicals. And so, you know, I, I wanted to bring a underrepresented. Uh, you know, seat or voice, face, whatever, uh, to the table. And, you know, I really feel like now is the time and now is the time for everyone to get involved in whatever way. Running for office. I never would have picked it. You know, I love being behind the scenes. And um, you know, academics clearly is, it's not, it's not my strength, whatever. But I love learning. I've always loved learning and um, you know, just to be a part of this. Whole um, yeah. Network of people, you know, I love every day of that. And so it's all worth it to me. I'm really excited and I love Honesty for Ohio. Thank you.
And I'll, I'd be happy to answer that question as well. I ran for the board similar to Kareem. Um, I was a very active parent. Renda, I know a very active parent um of students in our district. And um, wanted to get more involved. I was, you know, sort of the soccer mom, room parent mom, all that good kind of stuff. And I thought, oh, school board membership can't be that much different. And was shocked to find out that it's very, very, very different. I also came from a university administration background and I thought. Ah, public education can't be that different at the K-12 level than it is at college and found out that I was wrong about that as well. Um, so. But it was great. Much like Dion, I didn't have a day that I regretted doing it. Um, there were a lot of stressful times, a lot of times that we couldn't make everybody happy. I live in a large suburban district with lots of different interests. And if you can um get over the fact that as a school board member, you will never make everybody happy with every decision that you or your board makes. Uh, you'll be able to sleep at night as long as you know you've done your research and that your decisions are coming from. Um, a very, a very good place. Thanks.
Thank you, everyone, for the wonderful responses. Uh, next question, and I'm going to make it a challenge for you guys. I'm, I'm, I am going to ask to see if you can. Answer this question in about a minute, because we want to try to make sure we get to everyone's questions. Uh. As, as you are all aware, the state of Ohio, the Ohio Department of Education Strategy. Has something called a whole child framework. Uh, so I would like you to think about Ohio's whole child framework. And the whole concept of a whole child. Uh, framework and just explain to the audience in a minute, what you think it, what you think it is. Uh, why it is and whether or not it's a priority. And I'll put a link to the audience for the whole child framework for those who are not familiar.
Um, I will answer first, just because I do have to excuse myself really quickly because I have to go back to work. Um, much like many school board members, so that takes up about 10 seconds of my time. So um, I think it is addressing the entire child, so all the needs of a child. And with education, um, we have been introduced to a world of opportunities. And it's followed by legislation that has mandates for our school districts that are underfunded. Um, so in a nutshell, that's how I feel. It's very much needed. But it should be fully funded and it should not be um taken away from with. The open vouchers, which is an outright assault on public education. So I don't have anything against anyone else being educated wherever they are. But I feel that we should pay for public education as all students are entitled to that. And healthcare and education are not partisan. Those are human needs and they are necessary for a flourishing community. So.
So I'll, I'll go next. Um, thank you, Renda. You said a mouthful. I think that the whole child framework should just be. To me, that's understood. I think to effectively educate our students. They have to be supported. They have to feel safe. They have to engage. They have to be challenged and that should be. That, that is, that, that should be a no brainer. Unfortunately. When things become mandated, then that, there, there's a reason why they want to mandate things. It's. While that, while we all understand that to be true, I think that there's something else going on here. If we were to have adequate funding, we could do all these things effectively. But when you say that things need to be mandated and then you're cutting our funding for public education. In the same breath, it doesn't, it doesn't seem very genuine. So I think there is a way for us to reimagine education so that all these things are done and supported. Our, our students are supported, they're challenged, relationships are built, they feel safe. All of those things should happen, but it's very difficult to do that with limited funding. And then funding that is being reduced. So I completely agree with it. I think if what we need to do is to really reimagine education, put people at the table with partnerships. Um, and then we can probably get a lot more done, but to have the overarching cover of, oh, and we're going to cut your funding. Oh, and we're going to increase vouchers. It just seems disingenuine, but I believe it completely.
I agree with what Renda and Kareem have both said. Um, I think that when children feel like they are included and that they belong. Uh, when they have a place where they feel that they are safe and secure. Um, they will do well in school and I think it's our responsibility to make sure that the needs of our kids are met. Emotionally, physically, um academically, et cetera. But I totally agree with Dr. Moncrief Moffett. It's just in um. Almost impossible for the schools to do everything that we want to do, especially in this environment where um social emotional learning has become a political. Hot potato and, and kind of a, a naughty word for, for some. Um, for some voting members of our district. So. Um, I, I support the state's framework. Um, if it were supported financially and um, and vocally.
Yeah, I agree with everything that's been said. Our school district really actively promotes having. Um, a sense of belonging as the number one priority. Every student comes first. And you know, the, the bottom line about what you were talking about, the vouchers. Um, not only taking away our money, but giving away all this other money with no accountability. And that to me is, uh, you know, the added slap in the face that uh we have. Uh, to jump through so many hoops and, you know, have more transparency than we ever have. And, you know, more accountability and more innovation. And yet, you know. They don't have to do the same thing. They're not held to the same standards. It's, it's just so bold and so blatant, but um, you know, our, our students see through that. But they feel the sense of belonging and, you know, I'm experiencing watching. You know, them experience that where I didn't really have that. And so it's a huge contrast. And um, you know, they, they see through it and uh, you know, it's, it's blatant.
Thank you very much for your insightful responses. Uh, just wanted to remind the audience, if they have a question, they can feel free to message it to Cynthia or myself or put it in the chat. And we will ask the question. Uh, we do have a question from uh. The audience today, so I'd like to use this time to start and switching to these questions. Uh. How common or appropriate is it for school boards to meet with educators in their district? And the question is open to all four of you.
I think it's very common and I think it's incredibly um important and necessary to speak to the people who are in the direct. Line with our students. Um, with that being said, I do feel that the respect and courtesy of your superintendent is always necessary. So you do want to make sure that your superintendent is aware of the conversations. Um, but having a close connection with all of them is really important and that includes your administrators as well.
I would say there's a huge difference between listening to and problem solving for. Um, we want our um, community members, teachers, staff and administrators to. Um, be able to problem solve themselves with the appropriate. Others appropriate in their, in their communities, but I totally agree with Renda. I think school board members. Having opportunities to meet directly with staff and administrators. Uh, with the superintendent's support and probably presence at many of those. And you know, the likeliest place is the school board meeting itself. I think all of that is, is fantastic.
Um, our board president meets with the president of the teachers' union, um, and the superintendent. And a lot of communication goes that way. Uh, for me, I uh, see teachers all the time and that's in. Our um, community events, our athletic events, uh, we do walkthroughs in the school, um, you know, just uh. That's, you know, it's, it's impromptu's and um, we have interactions and, you know, I've been invited to. Uh, into classrooms and um, you know, that's, that's the way a lot of the communication. Works with us. I think a lot of school difference, uh, school districts do it differently. Um, so that's, yeah, that's how we work with the union.
Um, I, I have a different um. Odd position because I used to be a teacher and I was a very active and engaged parent. So a lot of the teachers and. Administrators were, are my friends simply because they were my kids' teachers. And so I appreciate Cheryl saying, problem solving for a personnel issue is not my role. However, listening as a friend is, or and also as a voter, community member, that is my role. I think um, someone asked a question, is it a red flag if the superintendent doesn't want you to meet? I personally think that it is. Um, because I, the, the board members as a community liaison should be able to, to interact with. Every single community member, young people, old people. Every community member, regardless of their position on the board, I feel. Now. I looked at it like the board members should kind of be eyes and ears for the superintendent to kind of help them. See what's going on because we do have a community perspective. Maybe I have a little different opinion about that in real time since I'm a board member, but I do think that. Teachers are voters, teachers are community members and. Um, as long as it's within the vein of I, you're a community member and you're sharing with me, I think it's great intel. But when it's a personnel issue, hey, I have a problem with and I want to complain to you. There's a thin line there and that's kind of one of the challenges of being a. A board member or a community person turned board member because you are actively engaged with those relationships already.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to ask another question. This one is just for Cheryl. But uh, there are some other questions that have popped up in the chat. So if you have a moment and. You are able to help answer these questions too, because I know we are going to run short on time. Please feel free to jump in on the chat and answer this question and answer those questions. So Cheryl, the question is for you. Uh, those of us who are first time candidates. Uh, how can we be involved in your organization if we do not win in November? I am very interested in helping with disability inclusion efforts.
Well, first of all, I, I hope you are successful. And I hope that you run a great campaign and that you are able to get your message of inclusion. Um, out to everyone in your community. If OSBA can help as you campaign. If OSBA can help as you campaign uh, through your attendance at board candidate workshops, which are offered across the state in September, please, please attend those. That will help you network with other potential school board members. Um, you can be involved with OSBA um, through its publications. If you are not successful, I hope you will be successful, but I think your best alternative is to regularly continue to attend your school board meetings, be a voice at their community table, um, continue to be a volunteer and to participate in organizations just like this Honesty for Ohio Public Education. So um, this is the kind of way that you can certainly build a network that will help you be successful the second time. We have many school board members who ran two or three or sometimes even four times before they were elected. So don't give up.
Thank you, Cheryl, for that inspirational message. So last question we have that we can answer here in this uh, panel discussion. And I would ask that each one of our panelists answer in 30 seconds. Uh, what do you love the best about serving on a school board? And Cheryl, you can speak from your past experience.
I would, I guess my quick answer would be um, knowing that I came together with other very committed and passionate individuals to make the kinds of decisions that um, 20 years from now will have benefited our students, whether they know it or not, you know? Um, and um, being part, being part of, just being part of um, a process that guarantees appropriate, safe and um, and high quality education for, for every child in, in my school district. It was an honor, truly was.
Dr. Moffett or Dion?
Go ahead.
Um, yeah, I feel like for me being a board member, it was a little bit out of my league. I feel like I've learned that um, a spectrum of experience and representation is so critical. When I was first elected, I thought only the LGBTQ community members and students would be excited, but everyone was excited. All the students were overjoyed and, you know, I was in shock and really surprised by that, but also um, the entire town, uh, they're proud of the choice they made. And, you know, I, I feel like I say it over and over and said it through my campaign, now is the time for everyone to step up. And um, people really appreciated that I did go for it. Um, so lo and behold, I've also seen that I do bring a perspective that other people don't have and the value in that and the difference that makes to people. So connecting with the students. As a queer person, I came out at 19. I have not been in mainstream society, really. I was in the queer community pretty exclusively until I came to Ohio. So this is really my first time being around kids a lot and in the culture. Uh, it's a totally different culture to me. And I am loving every minute of it. And, you know, I show up at things and I just can't believe how much people like me and appreciate that I'm there. I'm still in shock about that because it's not been my life experience. So, you know, it, it, it is like just never give up. And, you know, as much as I felt like it, it was too much to take on, this is way longer than 30 seconds and um, but uh, yeah, uh, anything can happen and it's so worth it. Don't give up. So.
So for me, I, I wrote down my why when I was running for office and I have had to revisit that piece of paper a lot because um, our district is large. I don't care what anybody tells you. Education is political. There, our kids are being politicized. There, every student has a dollar sign attached to them and they are being sought after by a variety of different perspectives. That part was disheartening to me, but I ran because I wanted to engage the community and make a difference on a higher level for students. And when I tell you I've had to revisit that, I mean that because it's just very difficult dealing with six other personalities. Behind the scenes, it's one way and then coming on the floor is a whole different way. Microaggressive behavior is real, um, passive aggressive behavior is real. Um, it, I, I've had to connect with people that I wouldn't necessarily sit down with you and have a cup of coffee. I, I don't like what you stand for, but I'm willing to work with you for the betterment of our kids. You really get challenged on your integrity. But what I found and I believe it to be true, even if I vote in a way that people don't like, I explain my vote. And I vote the way that I vote publicly and I am willing to explain that. I answer emails to people when they send them to me. It might take me a minute because we get a lot. But I answer and I explain my position. I seek out information from the state level. It, it's not, it, this is so not a sprint and I had to learn patience. I had to learn me because I don't go out many places because it's just, sometimes people come at you and say, hey, I'm having this problem when you're at the grocery store, when you're at, on a date, you know, like, so I've had to learn about me, but I seek out information. I'm constantly willing to learn and I'm willing to explain it to community members that want to listen. And I, and I appreciate Cheryl and Cynthia for saying, you have to recognize you're not gonna make decisions for, that everybody likes. But if you stand behind your decision and you explain it to people who are the most challenged, even if they're coming at you crazy, is that, I think people, I've, it's been my experience, people appreciate the authenticity of you being able to explain it to them because so many people don't take the time to do that. I wanted to be the type of board member that I wanted. And if I happen to see you at Kroger and I ask you just a quick question, I want you to be able to answer that or at least give me an email to be able to connect with you. So I do those things that I want done. And I think that that's the connectivity that I need. It's just to remember your why. Personally, I love hanging with kids. So I tell every building administrator, invite me to any event and they do. Because it's something about being recharged with the kids and the littles are my favorite. The littles, I call them the early childhood, when, tho- those are my favorite because that's where I see hope. They don't care that you are an elected. They just want you to play. They just, they don't care that you're black. You, hey, you're a big person in this. I love it and I find ways to get recharged. And then I find ways to connect that to parents to keep them recharged. So I use my position as a, as a way to help engage the community differently. And, and again, it goes back to the why. You have to write down your why. Why are you running? Because it's a challenge and then keep that at the forefront and recognize that you're not going to please everybody. That's not even your role, but there are people in this game, in this system who align with you. And so um, you, you just have to, you, you just have to remember that. So that's kind of, that's what keeps me going is the kids and the why.
Thank you very much, everyone. Uh, I appreciate Cheryl Ryan and our panelists for joining us today. I'm gonna kick it back to Cynthia to close us out.
If you all could see me, you'd know that my eyes are watering. Anyone that knows me at all knows that I'm a crier and I was so moved and impressed and inspired by everyone on this screen and everybody in the chat too. You are the heroes and the champions that Ohio needs and deserves and please, please, please stay in this fight for all of our babies and all of our children. Okay, so what's next? I'm gonna run through these quickly. The elections are next. 2023 general elections where all of the school boards are gonna be on the ballot Tuesday, November 7th. Um, I just listed some very important dates here. One of the most critical ones is Tuesday, October 10th. That's the deadline to register, to update your registration or to check your voter registration so that you can participate in the November 23 elections. Um, three easy ways to vote. First one is to make a voting plan. Again, check your voter registration, update it, register for the first time, do it right now, do not wait. And then the next thing on your plan is to decide how you want to vote in Ohio. We have three different ways to vote. Early in person, mail in by absentee ballot, or you can go to the polls on election day. And then get involved in the elections. You can become a poll worker. Did you know that poll workers get paid across Ohio? Yes, we do. Um, you can become um, a team member on the election protection team, which is how you can ensure safe and fair elections on the outside of the polls or on the outside of the boards of um, elections and then participate in voter registration drives. Um, become a voter registrar, um, or bring voter registration and absentee ballot requests to your own tabling um, that you're doing throughout the fall, all the way up to October. And here's something that I encourage everyone to do. Go to your local board of election, grab a stack of voter registration forms and absentee ballot requests. Put them on a clipboard, put a pen in there and carry them in your car. You'd be surprised how many opportunities you'll have when you won't even think about it. Just asking random stranger, hey, have you registered the vote? Have you checked your voter registration? Always carry around a clipboard um, with those, um, with those voter forms and help other people make a voting plan after you've done yours. This hot link here in yellow. Um, we'll give you all this information, the three different ways to vote, those important um, election dates and a lot more, a lot of other election information. Research your candidates. We've clearly got some rock stars and superstars um, in our program today and we want to continue filling our school boards with people with values like that and with a heart for children, people that center children, not agendas, not their own priorities, but that center children. You can do that by looking on your local board of education page to figure out who's actually been certified to run in your local school board district. You can head over to vote411.org with, which is the League of Women Voters um, electronic voter guide. That information should be updated um, right before early voting starts. You can also get the hard copy, um, Legal Women Voters Voter Guide, which will give you a download of everyone running in your local community. Um, go to your forums, your candidate forums and the debates and be sure that you research those candidates ahead of the event and bring a list of questions that you can ask them there. Um, Legal Women Voters Ohio, we put on candidate forums in our own local communities, Equality Ohio. Um, some of our other partners also put on very specialized candidate forums and debates as well. Please plug into those. Do not go by name recognition only. It is our responsibility as voters and families and education stakeholders to learn who these candidates are that are going to be in charge of our school districts um, and that's uh, school district governance. Um, a couple of other ways, read local media interviews with those candidates as well. It's so important to over inform yourself about candidates running for any office, but especially our local school boards. And over here to the right, just a couple of other quick ways that you can um, find candidate information. Of course, head over to that candidate's website. Follow their social media. You'd be surprised what they say on their website versus how they actually talk on their social media feeds. Um, so do that in tandem. Um, reach out to organizations and look at, you know, why they endorse or don't endorse particular candidates. And um, in a very short time, we will be putting out our own list of very thoughtful um, questions that you can bring to those school board forums or that you can reach out to those candidates and ask yourself. Um, pro tip here, create a sample ballot. You can do this at home so that when you go into um, your local board of election for early voting or you're filling out that absentee ballot or you go to the polls on election day, you already have that sample ballot of the folks that you want to vote for. So you don't forget, oh, who was that that I loved? Who did I hate? Who was I not sure about? That sample ballot will bring all that information. Or you, you can print out that sample ballot um, at vote411.org also. And finally, you did all the hard steps. You're registered, you filled out your absentee ballot. Don't forget to actually go vote. Voter registration is only the first part of being an active voter. A lot of times um, people think when they register folks, that's the end of the game. No, folks, that's just getting you to the starting line. So when we're helping other people become engaged voters, we need to remember, we need to carry that ball all the way forward to election day. Quick reminder about the three different ways, early in post, in person, at your local board of election. Mail-in voting, you can send in your voter, um, your absentee ballot request form now. Please do it now. Do not wait. And then of course, election day voting at your polls. Um, uh, be sure to bring the proper voter ID when you're voting onsite, whether it's at the board of elections or at your poll, bring your sample ballot. Um, you could head over to voteohio.gov to figure out or to get a full list of what qualifies as voter ID now because a lot of our um, election laws and requirements have changed. Please, please head over to that site so that you show up fully prepared to vote. And again, help at least five other people vote. You'd be surprised how many people don't know the process, are intimidated by the process or are completely disenchanted with the process. So we need to pull everybody into our elections. New students that are voting for the first time, any new voter, multi-generational voters, newly naturalized citizens that aren't even familiar with our overall um, national elections, local elections. Let's help everybody participate in democracy, voters with disabilities, um, shelterless voters, um, incarcerated voters and folks that are, are homebound and maybe can't make it out to the polls. We need to pull everyone along. Um, that's how we're gonna create and sustain our multiracial democracy and get people in those school board seats that represent all of us and all of our identities. Okay, folks, and just a couple of events that are coming up. Um, we're already five minutes past, so um, I am going to go ahead and land on this QR code where you can um, join our mailing list. Stay engaged. Um, we're kind of in a lull right now because all of the, um, a lot of our friends are out on recess right now, at least on a state level. So um, we will be picking things up pretty fast and furious um, in the month of September. This is the best way to stay engaged with everything.